Call our hearing to order. Everyone have a copy of all the different colors in front of them? You're going to start with the warrant articles tonight? Mark, do you want to --
Sure. We're going to do this a little -- Can everyone hear me? So I don't have to use a microphone. We're going to do this a little bit differently. We sometimes, in the past, have gone line item by line item. But that's really in the minutia for you. And I'd rather, if we could tonight, focus on bigger picture. We're all hit with the same tax rate here. And it's really important to the board and to myself that everybody understands what comprises our tax rate, what's driving it. And then you get a sense of perspective on, you know, how things end up in warrant articles and other things. Also, there are a number of warrant articles here tonight for, really, for a community discussion. Tonight, you can tell the board that we'd rather not do that, or we'd rather have this or that. And these are your elected reps, so they can do anything they want. It's their warrant. They can present anything they want at the school district meeting. But tonight is the night that we have to sort of finalize all of that. All right? So if you have a question, you obviously go through the chair. But tonight is the night to ask any questions. It's much easier tonight. You can actually do something tonight versus yes or no on the floor of the school district meeting. But I just want to let you know what we've sort of been going through at the board level in dealing with the state of New Hampshire in recent years. The state has been slowly pulling away from its support of New Hampshire's cities and towns. And it's not only here, it's in the town halls, it's in the -- I'm sure the county commissioners would tell you the same thing. The area where the state has pulled out is in subsidizing retirement payments for teachers, policemen, and firemen. The state used to pay 35 percent of the retirement payments. They have now just stepped away. They're paying nothing. So that 35 percent has now come on the cities and towns in those three categories. Building aid, they used to support building aid. They've stepped away. They've frozen building aid. And there are some specific projects that they're willing to talk about. But in terms of funding projects, they have frozen building aid. Foundation aid, we used to call it foundation aid in the old days. Those were payments to communities that were property poor, very similar to the town of Plymouth, but also service centers, very similar to the town of Plymouth, where Plymouth is the hub for all kinds of activities. And many communities, quite frankly, use Plymouth services and then go back to their more bedroom communities. Well, the state recognized that in the old days and would support that with payments to the town and also to the school district. And we used to call that foundation aid. It's now called stabilization grants. But about five years ago, the state said, "We're getting rid of the stabilization grant money, and we're going to cut it 4 percent a year for 25 years." It's had a significant impact in towns like Plymouth. And so we're really excited about a house bill that has an awful lot of support. And I'll talk about that in a second. But foundation has been cut. Also, from the selectmen's perspective, bridge and road help is basically moving away also. The state used to really contribute toward the upgrade of local bridges and local roads. And then through what was called revenue sharing. And most of that has gone. So I'm sure you'll hear that from the selectmen as they try and deal with it. Because when we walk into the room with the school board and say, "We are down in revenue $200,000 or $300,000," that's an automatic increase in the tax rate of, you know, 40 cents, 50 cents before we even start, just because of the lack of revenue that's coming from the state. There's a bill that has great support. It's House Bill 177. That would restore stabilization grant money to the level it was funded in fiscal year '16. It has the support of all three of the House members, obviously, from Plymouth, has great support through both the House and the Senate. That would, just before then, July 1, for next fall's tax bill, that would infuse $24 million into those communities, those property poor communities, that had their stabilization cut. It would be a big help. So if you see your state senator particularly, if you could say, you know, "House Bill 177 is pretty important to the town of Plymouth." So let's start with the warrant articles. Mr. Chairman, as I introduce the warrant articles, and there may be questions, you can --
Yes.
The first one up, and this would be working off the blue and the green sheet. One is the actual text that you would see if they were all passed. That would be the blue sheet. The green sheet is sort of a guide for you to say, you know, what is this? The first article is the classic article, "To accept the reports of agents and auditors and everyone else." That's sort of a typical warrant article for us and all the communities in stool districts in the -- basically, you're accepting the auditor's report and also the reports in the book. It's compiling the history of the school district or the town in that year. And so that's basically what you're proving is, yeah, we'll accept for the record these reports going in. Article two is a contingency account, and that would be for $1,000. You have to raise your contingency account through a warrant article. You just can't place it in a line item. And people say, "Well, we're going to do it $1,000. Ridiculous." Well, in the state of New Hampshire, if you don't have a line item for something, you can't legally purchase it. So the contingency account then allows us to get something that doesn't specifically have a categorization. So the $1,000, though we rarely ever use it, it's there in case we have something that doesn't have a line item. So it's sort of a legal technicality. Now, many communities have very large contingency funds. But historically, we've never raised money like that. We can't afford to raise money like that. We just have just said, "No, we'll see what we can do with the whole budget." Article three, this year, the faculty's been working without a contract. Couldn't come to an agreement the previous year. So the faculty is working without a contract. So this is actually year one of a potential four-year contract. And the faculty did not get a raise on the grid this year. So that meant if you were all stepped out, you didn't get a raise this year. If you were on the grid and you had a step in front of you, you got your step because of what's called evergreen language, which is contained in the collective bargaining agreement. So this is a four-year agreement, but payments would be made in years two, three, and four. And the impact is 23 cents, 24 cents, and 25 cents per thousand. And that's based on the current net assessed valuation, the value of the community. The contract was negotiated by two members of the board, and I'm sure they'd be willing to take any questions about. Article five, excuse me, is an article that asks the voters to raise an appropriate $60,000 to replace four movable partitions that act as classroom walls. We have eight in total in the building. We replaced four of them last year. We're fortunate enough to have about $60,000 in the capital reserve fund. So we transferred that money in to pay for those four movable walls. But this would be $55,000 to $60,000 that we would be paying in one year. Its tax impact is about 12 cents per thousand. The two walls are in the south wing and two in the east wing. They have about a 20- to 25-year lifespan, and these walls are about 29 to 30 years old. So we took the most dangerous walls out last year, and these walls need to be replaced, but they weren't as disrepair as the walls that we took out last year. Questions on that? A lot of you have been in the school a lot, so you know that those walls are constantly going back and forth. Article five just actually came to the board as a request from a number of parents, and I think there was a big discussion in the PTO about campus resource officer. And this is sort of a unique sharing perspective between the two buildings. We see this administratively as a campus. So what we try and do is treat the entire facility as one campus to grab the economy and scale of that. And also, it just makes a lot of sense for us. So both school districts talked a little bit about campus resource officer. And then the boards, through me, said, you know, "Why don't we take a look at it as a sharing?" We have a building security person, safety coordinator in the high school, Todd Austin, who does a terrific job. And so the high school board is pretty comfortable with the interior of the building as it is, but with great support from the Plymouth Police Department at the same time. So, but there's no interior support here at the elementary school. So there was a conversation between the two boards, and they said, "Why don't we put out to the voters a shared campus resource officer?" And we would start it. We don't know where they would work, where the hours would be spent. So we used a 65-35 combination, which is the combination we use for the park and rec services that are used here on the campus. And basically, that's how we got to 60. So 35 percent of the expense to the school would be here in the elementary tax rate. 65 percent of it would be in the high school end of the tax rate. Now, don't forget, you pay about 24 cents of every dollar spent next door. So it's not 65 that's just going away. You have a share of that. And so, and we would work that out. Now, let me tell you about the office of the officer. Do you remember Plymouth Police Department? They would answer to the Plymouth Police Chief. They would work with the principals in both buildings and the principal staff. But they would be a police officer answering to the chief, so that there's no misunderstanding about who the police officer works for. And so the impact is about 6 cents. Terms of job description and things, we're going to, it's going to be sort of pay-as-you-go. We're going to figure that out next year as we begin to work our way into this new position. And again, the chief and the principals would be very involved in that.
Who would do the hiring?
The hiring would be done by the police chief, in concert with the two principals and the principal staffs in both buildings. But it would be a police officer answering to the police chief.
Is now when I ask to amend this, or?
Sure. You can, this is the community's --
Come on up, speak at the --
All right. So I would like to see this warrant article be amended to include a social worker instead of a resource officer at the elementary school level. I think that the benefits that we'll get from a social worker dealing with today's social and notable issues far outweigh the benefits that a police officer in the elementary school will provide. Thank you.
Any comment from the board members?
My only concern is that if the, this is somewhat of a balancing act between voters of this PES district and the voters in the high school district sharing what would be an expense of, or sharing, you know, the position. I'm not, I think the presumption is that if it were to be approved or denied by voters, hopefully, it would be approved or denied by both districts and not have to split it. However, I'm not sure where it's going to go. I think, I don't know if, Mark, would the, has there been any discussion about how one district would interact with the police department? Would the police department be able to provide a resource officer on a halftime basis if one district were to support it and the other not?
I think, I think that the chief is open to, I think he would like some protection down here. But we never, we never talked specifically about that. But I think he is open to any conversation that has, that creates a police presence on the campus.
So if we amend this, and the high school wants to keep the resource officer, they could either, they could either cut it out altogether, or they could split it. We would have to change the wording of this warrant article to accommodate this change. Mark, our best way of doing this is a vote?
Well, yes. The board has to vote to change any warrant article that we're doing tonight. So that's part one.
Well, I guess what we'd have to do is each board member would have to, would have to give us input and tell, you know, what their feeling is about change, or whether they want to keep the campus resource officer. And then from that point, we can talk about how we would proceed from that point.
May I approach the mic one more time?
Yes, Kim.
So to elaborate, if we initiate additional social work issues in the elementary school, then the resource officer demands would be decreased in the high school by addressing the mental and emotional needs of the kiddos nowadays. I mean, they have stressors that our generations didn't have to deal with. We had ours, they have theirs, theirs are nonstop. If we can address them and identify them, then hopefully, that will mitigate the acts of mass violence that the resource officer is designed to prevent, which research really hasn't proven that they are effective. It's, the research is so early, it's only been studied for about two years, and there isn't outstanding evidence either way. So I think that addressing the issues, addressing the problems will far, you'll get a better bang for your buck with, you know, the individual attention to the kids versus the reaction to the kids' actions that has, you know, hasn't been properly identified.
So I know that it's a line item, not a line item, a warrant item this year. After the first year, are we going to look at it and then decide if it's going to be another warrant, or is it going to be a line item? Do we know what's going to happen after the first year of, I mean, if it passes? Do we know how that's going to go?
I would think that it would stay in the budget, depending on what the, you know, what the needs of the community would stay.
Yeah. The only reason why I was saying that was because if it's going to be looked at after a year, we could look and see if the needs of the social, the social work aspect are being met. Because in theory, the resource coordinator could maybe do some more of that at the younger level for the 35 percent of the time versus the 65 percent of the time. That's what I was thinking.
If I can say something? I think in our discussions earlier, we were talking about the safety of the outside of the campus, not necessarily inside with the kids or a threat coming from the inside. It's more using the SRO as an outside kind of perimeter check. So I think, point well taken, you know, and I agree. But I think we're talking about two different uses and two different, two different issues.
Yeah. The social worker would be working within the schools. Resource officer would be more on the outside.
May I approach you? Sorry.
That's what we're here for.
So, but the resource officers in these catastrophic school shootings and violence episodes have come from within the school?
Yes.
They, yes, we do have some pre-people occasionally approach the school, but the police officers themselves have said numerous times they could be here in three minutes. We have locked down doors. We have, you have the access badges, you have to, I don't see the benefit of a resource officer permitting the border, you know, looking for, you know, the stray individual who infrequently approaches the buildings. So I think, I go back, I think that a vast majority of these shootings have come in. They bring their guns in a bag, their guns are in the locker. If a resource officer is outside and the gun is on the inside, it's three minutes too late. Thanks.
Michael? I just, we don't know specifically what the resource officer's job description is going to be. We have a sense. But they also will be working in the interior of the building. There are times when resource officers do a great job with kids that they know from downtown. I mean, it'll be an evolving job description, but it's not, it's not a night watchman going from location to location plugging a clock. It's, they would, they would have some responsibilities in the interior of the building. So, you know, I don't have a job description because we, this would all be brand new to us. And it's, you know, we have Todd Austin next door, who has a role, a significant role in the high school. So we would be balancing his role along with time in this building also. So, you know, it's just, I just want to make, it's not, it's not an exterior watchman kind of, or watch woman kind of job. It isn't. It's a job that will evolve. And quite frankly, I probably would have quite a bit of interaction with all of our
The elementary school has a guidance counselor, a school psychologist, and a school nurse. That, those three positions very often deal with social work issues, plus outside agencies that come in and work with the kids that have other issues. I mean, has the school noticed an increase or a need for a social worker that those positions aren't filling or can't take care of?
Julie?
No doubt that we're feeling the demographics, a demographic change where the students are coming to school with significant needs. And you're right, Mike, it's, we work as a team, and our role as a team has been the social worker role, the nurse, the guidance counselor, Kelly.
Yeah.
So it's, I mean, it's a pretty big need in the building.
And I would say quite often to add to that, too, our Plymouth Police Department has been a great resource. And not just in maybe what people would think upfront, but they have a lot of those outside connections as well. And to utilize them for references, for gaining access to other organizations, facilities, programs that are out there, they've been good with helping us out with that as well. It has been a nice relationship so far.
Okay. Question?
Would there be expectations for training for the officer, specialized training?
Yes. Yeah. It's built into the budget, too.
Yeah.
Just curious, and this is later on in the warrant articles, but is there any flexibility within the budget to address perhaps hiring a social worker within that framework?
Yeah. We don't have the flexibility at all this year in the budget. It's a very tight budget.
Has any, any positions been added that are not necessarily spoken for as far as funding? I guess that's kind of my question.
Andy, the only position, we have, we have three teachers in each of the grades funded. So if something were to pop up and said, you know, "Well, we don't need three at this grade level," that would be potentially money that would be available, but we won't know that for quite a while.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Can you make a comment? Well, I need to ask the board's opinion.
So my question is if this warrant article passes for the resource officer, I think potential for next year, obviously, there's a need to have a social worker in this budget. It just, I don't think it's going to happen this year, but I think it's important for the people. So I think that going forward for next fiscal year, it would be something that would be bra. And it's obviously important to you guys, so it's important to us, so.
I agree with what Amy said. I think there's definitely, you bring some good points for having social work and what can be done in-house for prevention, which we often don't focus on a lot of times. But as Frank had said, I think some of the conversations that we worry about with the land that we've acquired out back, abutting certain properties where we have some transient populations that are down there, I think that's a place where our kids are going down for sports practices, and that's a concern. The parents that aren't in the school, some of those social situations are a little precarious, I think. And I think those are some of the concerns we talked about as a board being concerned
Not really much to add. I agree with all Ben said. I think there's a need for both. It's just a matter of what we can put into the warrant article at this time.
When this concern was first brought to the attention of the board, I think there was some level of concern about voting, about security around voting while students are here. There was also, if I recall correctly, there was, you know, there were other concerns as well. I personally, I question the need for this in this community. And I question the need of a resource officer in this community. I think that there's something to be said for inviting the type of conflict that one might react to for some reason. I think it's a good question to put, I think the question of a resource officer is a good question to put to the voters. I think that our administration, I'm not sure that I've seen that our administration is overtaxed in terms of dealing with the needs of students in the schools as it is. And I support what the work they've done currently. That's my thought.
Well, I'm in, I'm pretty much following the line of thinking that you have as well. I am, you know, we do live in a very nice community, very safe community, with an excellent police department that, that will be in this building within three minutes. The changing demographics of this town over the 21 years that I've sat on this board have, have really changed how I look at what is needed within the school system. Whether this year it's a, you know, a resource officer, or if it's a, another professional to deal strictly one-on-one with the kids, I think would be a good question for the town. I think leaving the article as it is stated right now and let the town make that decision on voting day would be the way that I would lean with this. So the board, in agreement with that, or the board want to change this, this article?
I would move that we move forward with the article as written.
Second.
The whole favor?
Aye.
Okay.
As much as I support Greg's concerns. And I thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Okay. Article six.
This is an article, and it's put here sort of as a flashing light that we need to recoat the roof. Someone asked me, "Does it absolutely, positively have to be done this year?" Well, no. But it has to be done pretty soon. So this is a, this is a coating, the silver coating.
So, this is a, this is a coating, the silver coating that's on the roof. It goes over a rubber roof surface. It's a protective coating, should be changed every 10 years. I think it's been about 10, 12 years since we last did it. And it comes with a 10-year warranty. And the, what we have right now is estimates that range from $85,000 to $105,000. So, obviously, we take the high side of it when it's a cost like that because we just don't know what they will run into up there. So, this is, we've always taken very, very good care of this building. That's why we're not in a hole like some other communities are in terms of multimillion-dollar renovations for, or restorations for buildings because we have on a continual basis taken care of the building. The outside of the movable walls and the roof, the only other project the community will be facing in the building is the oil tanks, which three or four years from now will make a decision whether we go from number two oil to propane. A number of our buildings now throughout the SAU have changed from number two to propane. And of course, the high school has, has the wood heating plant with propane backup. So, that's the other major issue that the community is facing, but certainly not looking at any bond issue or anything because we have, we have kept the building up. So, that's what this article is. It's, do you want to do the roof and when do you want to do it? So, we'd appreciate some feedback on that, too. This is a matter that there is some tax rate flexibility on. We all get the same tax bill, so we all know what we're talking about. So, if we do it this year, if we do it next year, we need to do it. The issue is when do you want to do it?
So, I've been coming to the meeting, so I know how you're saying that this is very important, but when I read this, I just, it doesn't sound important. So, I didn't know if we could add to the wording that there is a 10-year warranty and we are at 12 years or something to that effect, to show that it's been 10 years since we've paid for this. It's not that we've done something like that. The other thing is after we do this, can we change it to add a Warren article like next year to say, if this was a hundred grand this year, can we save $10,000 and make like a capital reserve or whatever the correct term would be, to make savings for this? So, we're only saving $10,000 a year instead of coming up with a hundred grand.
Sure.
So, those are two topics, I guess.
If I could address the second topic, quite a while ago, when you were in school here, not that long, compared to me, but we had this very same conversation and it may have been at the town level, and it was about capital reserve accounts versus paying bond payments. And it was over fire trucks or something like that. And the discussion came up that Ken Sutherland, senior, Michael, you remember Ken?
Yes.
Stood up and said, the people that use it should be paying for it, and I'm against capital reserve accounts because you're going to take my money, put it in the bank, 10 years from now, I'm going to be gone, you're going to be spending my money on something. So, I'm against it. I know it's the Yankee way to save money, but this Yankee wants people that are using it to pay for it. And so, the decision was made to go bond payment. So, the people in the community using the fire truck would, would be paying on a year-to-year on a lease payment or whatever, whatever it was. But the community's had that conversation before. That's why the town, the Plymouth School District doesn't have a lot of capital reserve accounts because we started voting pay-as-you-go rather than collecting money from people and then paying cash down the line when many of those people may be gone. So, that's the philosophical piece of the story of why there's no capital reserve accounts. Now, some other SAU, schools in our SAU loaded with capital reserve accounts. They, they buy into, you know, savings bank stuff, so. And I shut my mouth. I just sit there and say, however you want to pay for it, pay for it, but we got to do it. So, but that's, that's the different philosophies in the different towns.
That doesn't preclude next year from starting a capital reserve. That's what, no, what the town wants.
And to that point, last year, the movable wall sections were paid for from the capital reserve account. So, part of the reason we're raising funds this year is to do the other portion.
Okay. Any questions on?
Well, that's Amy's first one.
Yeah. I just, this is part two.
Oh, yeah. So, the first part was can more wording be added to that article to say?
How old is?
Yeah.
How old do we get?
To make it, show how it is important this year because we're a year 10 of 12 and there was only a 10-year warranty or whatever the exact numbers are.
On the, what they'll be voting on is the, on the blue sheet.
Right. It doesn't say anything about the years.
Yeah. The green sheet can say anything you and the board wanted to say. That's just-
Do they get the green sheet when they vote with the blue sheet?
They could or they couldn't. It's available whether they read it or not, but the green sheet can say anything you want because it's an informal guide to the voting. So, if the community wants the green description changed, happy to change it, but the blue has to stay as it is because that's the legal document.
Okay. So, can we add a line on the green article that says what year the roof was last done in or how many years it has lasted?
Sure.
That's what I would ask.
Okay. I'll do some research to make sure I have the right year.
Yeah. My only question is, do we have the information?
Yeah. John Francis will have it.
All right. I would move that we add that description to the green sheet description for the article to say this, this was last, this roof, roof was last recoded in 2007 or whenever, whenever it was.
Right. We can do that.
Okay. Any more discussion on Article six?
Article seven.
No, just move it along. Article seven is a, we went, we applied for every grant. This was, the state last year had a surplus and the governor said, I want to do something about school security. So, we were all given opportunities in all of the school districts to apply for security money, school security money, working with Homeland Security, working with your local police department. So, we put in, we put in for all kinds of stuff in all of the buildings. We were approved for projects up to $100,000, but the, the school district had to pay a portion of it. When we looked at what we got approved for, we got approved for some bulletproof glass in the front windows and the entrance sliders. So, as you come into the building, that was approved to be put as, and again, you know, folks will say, well, you know, the rest of the building is, is all glass and what it is, it's buying us time. And I'm not anywhere near a safety person, but a professional, but it buys us time. There's some reception area electronics in terms of cameras and things like that. So, we can see if you're in Holderness, I don't know if any of you have been in any of the Holderness classrooms, specific classrooms where you can see the front door from a classroom. So, you can actually see what's going on in the front of the building from some specific classrooms deep into, into the Holderness school. So, there's a sense of, I see what's going on out there while you're taking care of your kids. So, some of that electronics and also some film for, for both sets of doors, which is, again, buys us some time. So, we're looking at a project that is, let me see what the numbers, it's an 80/20 share. So, it's $18,000 for those, for those upgrades. $14,400 would come from the state and $3,600 would come from local taxation.
Any questions? Article eight.
This is the big one. So, we're going to, we'll move off to, we'll move off to the budget and if you would, if you go to page 11, so we can sort of focus on appropriations and what the, the major driver is to. Basically, the Plymouth budget this year coming up that you'll be voting on, other than the Warren articles, is the very same budget that we had this year with the addition of one, one teaching position in the 1100 account. And that's, that's really about, there's no new this or new that or, and nothing significantly got chopped. It's basically the supplies that we have, what we have to run the building. The major change is when you look at an increase in the appropriation account of $479,000. $307,597 of that is in special education. And those are programs that students have, that we have input in, but basically, those are programs that kids have to have. And then, if you go down into health insurance, $112,709. It's a 14.6% increase in the guaranteed maximum rate. Could come in lower than that, but that is, it won't go higher than that. We're in a self-funded pool through the municipal, from the legal, the health trust, the history of, I think the history of the trust is over there, you may have copies of it. We average about an 8% increase a year over 20 years. That's basically what our average has been. We've had some terrific years and things have gone our way, and we've had some not-so-terrific years and things haven't gone our way. This is one of those years that we, our, our individual pool didn't do well. And the folks in that pool are the, below, you see a list of SAU 48 and then some of the towns that are included in our pool. And that's, we're a subpool in a giant pool of lots of cities and towns and school districts in the state of New Hampshire. So, those are the two major expenses that are driving the appropriation increase. If you go down the categories, it, 1100 is instruction, that's, that's regular ed. That's, that's school as you and I knew it. Special education is the 1200 account. Co-curricular is a combination of all of our in-house clubs and programs and theater and drama and music, also athletics. Preschool program is grades, well, basically grades three until they're ready to come to school. Most of that is driven by special ed programs for kids that have been identified as, at a young age of needing some help before they come to school. Guidance, health services and psychology, speech, OT, PT. And then, and it's pretty, you don't need me to read this to you. I mean, basically, it's the operation of the building and some of the programs. Yes, ma'am?
Now, I have a question about, as you're going through these line items.
Sure.
I'm hearing from Julie and from other parents that we have this concern about social and psychological concerns with growing needs of students, yet we're taking money away from those categories. If we see it in the schools as it being important that kids need more and more of those, you know, looking at guidance, psychological services are going down in their budgets. Should we reevaluate how we spend our money when the kids need social and psychological help more increasingly? Maybe that can't change now, but at some point, it seems like those shouldn't be placed in theake from.
Right. Psychological services is, is $1,800. That, we, we have, we fund a contract psychologist who's here full-time, so that may just be a tweak of that contract. The position is remaining exactly the same. And then, in guidance, again, that's, that, that is just probably a rounding. It's 1,800, but in a budget like this, it's just, the services are exactly the same. They're both, both full-time. I think the issue that we talked about earlier, social worker, I think it's a critical issue.
Yeah.
People come in, well, do we need another guidance counselor? No, we don't need another guidance counselor. We need a social worker, someone who's working in the homes, working with the families. It's a critical need and, and when you, when you juxtapose it to a campus resource officer, you know, it just tears at your heart because you need both. So, but given the way we tax ourselves and the, and the, and the impact on the town of Plymouth, we can't do that right now. So, you know, we, I hear you loud and clear and certainly the folks, the board recognizes it and Julie and Kelly who are in it every day recognize it, so if we could, we would.
Thank you.
Any questions about the categories? In, the next area that, that we're down in, and the pink sheet describes that to you a little bit, is revenues. You walk through, and that's the, the last sheet. It looks, looks like this. It's a flat up and down sheet. It's the last page that should be attached to your budget. Revenues basically are revenues that, that we collect outside of property taxes. So, this is where state, federal help really shines through. So, if you look at the first category, unreserved fund balance, last year we had $126,282. That's either leftover appropriations that we didn't spend or excess revenues that came in over and above what we thought we were going to get. And so, we're projecting zero. We always project zero at this time. I mean, next year it could be a real zero, for those of you at the board meeting and saw the presentation on, on where we are right now this year. But we always use a zero because I would rather have you leaving here tonight thinking, well, the tax rate's going to go up X and it actually comes in Y. It's less than you expected because we were conservative on our revenue estimates. The next category is catastrophic aid. That's been cut in half. And that is, that is money directly related to individual student programs that cost us more than three and a half times the state average. So, the state, what the state does is they will help us, used to be at about 90%, now it's at about 60%. They used to help us with any individual program that costs more than three and a half times the state average tuition, which is up around $105,000 now. So, if a student's program came in at, say, $120,000, they would give us a percentage of that $15,000 that was over and above. But that percentage share, the state has been just putting the same number in their line item and there's less and less to be distributed, so. Adequacy grant, this is adequacy where we get about $3,500 a child in the school plus some stabilization money. This is the area that if House Bill 177 passes, will have a significant bounce to it when we go to set the tax rate. That, that's the line where that money would kick in. We would get, we'd get a letter from the Department of Revenue Administration sometime in early September saying, here's your new adequacy number. So, if House Bill 177 passes, that, that number will go up significantly. It'd be a big help to the town of Plymouth. But I, I have to act and project like it's a pipe dream. Keno Garden, that's the aid for kindergarteners. We keep that separate because it's a separate account in the state. It's linked to Keno profits. It's not linked to adequacy. There are bills in the legislature and you'll hear and see them saying, put kindergarteners in the adequacy account. Remind this separate Keno business. But right now, the law is it comes from the profits of, of Keno. And then the federal revenues, Medicaid reimbursement, and that is, that's a percentage of what we pay in Medicaid services for eligible students who get Medicaid services delivered here in the building. Local revenues, regular ed tuition, you see the $125,000 projection. That, we get tuition, we have some Ellsworth kids that come here. Ellsworth doesn't have a school. Some of their kids come here. We bill them on a per-child basis. Occasionally, we'll get a family that lives in another town that wants to send their child to Plymouth Elementary School and they pay tuition. And occasionally, we used to have kids from Warren here, but they add, put an addition on their building. They're spending too much money in tuition. They put an addition on their building and they're keeping their seventh and eighth graders in Warren. Special ed, we run a number of programs in the building. some of their kids come here, we bill them on a per-child basis. Occasionally, we'll get a family that lives in another town that wants to send their child to Plymouth Elementary School, and they pay tuition. And occasionally, we used to have kids from Warren here, but they add, put an addition on their building, they're spending too much money in tuition, they put an addition on their building, and they're keeping their seventh and eighth graders in Warren. Special ed, we run a number of programs in the building, and it's a cost avoidance for us. We, our, our own kids are in those programs, and at the same time, if a student from another SAU school qualifies for the program, then, then they're tuitioned in here by the other school districts. Occasionally, there's a, there's a student from outside of SAU 48, but the majority of kids come from other SAU 48 schools. Preschool tuition, and preschool assist, that's a federal program that helps fund that. And then, some, again, the preschool, the pep program, kids that, that aren't special ed but want to come to our preschool, their parents pay tuition, and that's where that revenue is from, too. And then there's the title programs. So, when you add up all of these, you add up all of these revenues, they get to $3,54,000, and then you subtract that from the 8.3, and then that 5-2-6-2 number, that's the amount of money we'd be raising in property taxes. And with the lower assessment, with the lower revenue projections, and the appropriations increase, our increase at the moment is $748,000, which is about 16 and a half percent, or $1.55 per thousand. That does not include the Warren articles. So, when you add the Warren articles together, you get over, I think, about $2,000. Yeah, the main budget is $1.55, and the Warren articles are about 63 cents, so it would be $2.18 increase. And then you have the high school piece that comes in after that.
Any questions for the board? Mark, we need to vote to move this?
Yes. The Warren articles, and I will make the note on the green sheet, so that it'll be a corrected sheet, probably in other color, so we don't have any bad information.
We'll entertain a motion to move the Warren articles.
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay, no other business, make a motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
Second, who in favor?
Aye.
Right.